Everyone would please rise for the Fledge of Legion. Thank you. It's a couple of announcements tonight. The board met an executive session for thirty minutes prior to the this board meeting and for approximately ninety minutes following our last board meeting. We have Mrs. Canton with us on Zoom this evening and Mrs. Kraus, Dr. Unspur Facero. Our and and Dr. Zawanski, thank you, are excused all away on assorted personal business. With that, I think that we do not have our alumni weekend proclaimer because of a scheduling conflict. So I will take this opportunity, or would you like to take the opportunity?
Oh, just to proclaim in the absence of any other speaker to the effect. We know it to be the annual tradition of having the alumni weekend with some festivities planned. And everyone looks forward to this each year. And so we welcome back alumni and look forward to a great weekend.
Thank you.
Sure.
And I will just echo on behalf of the board. Welcome back to the alumni and excited to hear about all of those activities. That brings us to citizens comments to the board on agenda items.
There do not appear to be.
Any comments from individuals in the room on agenda items? Okay, then that brings us to our board representatives comments. We missed you last meeting and we are excited to have you here. So I'll start with you, Mr. Wetzel.
Thank you. So this week we had the Fall Classic Book Fair, which is a large undertaking for the PSA and their volunteers. And every time that that I walked through there, there were four or five volunteers and then parents come in to help their children shop. So it's a great way just for parents to come in and be involved during that process. And for kids to enjoy shopping. It's always fun to see parents kind of trying to nudge them along when they're trying to figure out, I only have this much money. How do we make it work? But PSA this year, they upped the amount of or the value of coupons that you could give. So teachers all get coupons that if they notice maybe one of the children don't aren't able to purchase a book or they forgot their money or don't have it. They're able to to give them that coupon. We had a lot of donations from families this year that really every child was able to get a book. And they also eliminated the students having to pay sales tax. So PSA just paid sales tax because trying to explain, you know, it's nine ninety-nine, yes, you have ten dollars, but it's good. They just took care of it. And that worked really well. The ton of books sold just seeing the smiles on kids' faces and that love of reading. That's what we want. So it was very successful. We also had two open houses this week and we were able to have the book fair open during the open house. So it's just another great time for families and the kids to be there to shop together and to come into the school. They were very well attended. A lot of positive interactions and and comments from the teachers, from the families, just to get in there this early in the year. The air conditioning was amazing. So it kept the temperatures down, especially as you're coming in there to the entrance where the book fair is. A lot of people congregate there. So a lot of people complimented that and commented just how nice it was to have the HVAC in place. And then the last thing I have, we there are a lot of pictures on our Facebook page about dot day and kind of the buildup to dot day. So it is an international day that's celebrated based on Peter Reynolds book, The Dot. This is something that Mrs. Jarrett wanted to bring to Kelly Elementary School. And she tied it into all of her art classes. The kids read the book, started doing dot projects. And if you haven't read the book, it is an amazing book just on a child that felt they didn't have the ability to be creative or to paint or draw. And they just made a dot and the teacher said in the book, you know, put your name on it. And they framed it, put it behind their desk, and it just showed the confidence grown. By the end of the book, the child's helping other kids draw and telling them to put their name on it and make it theirs. And that was really the focus, just on everybody's ability, everybody's creativity. And Friday was when we celebrated dot day and everyone was encouraged to wear dots. So there were a variety of outfits and really the families went all out. It was pretty awesome just to see the creativity and everybody was looking at each other's dots and complimenting them. And for those that did forget or didn't have, we had plenty of little circle stickers. So they were putting dots all over and quite a few of them you can find around the building now on the floor that have fallen off during the day, but just an awesome day and a fun celebration. Just of creativity and and just a fun way to end last week. And I know Mrs. Jarrett did email a little video presentation that she compiled to explain it and share some of the pictures. So.
Pass it on to Mr. Wu.
Please thank Mrs. Jarrett.
You're gonna follow that video. So we've got a lot of great things going on at Lindtown. As we've talked about here at the board level about, you know, students and their needs for their social and emotional health. One of the things that we noted in our teacher survey from the beginning of the year was that teachers were identifying that as well, but also wanting to learn more themselves about how to be able to to support students. So we've created a small team of people that get together and we had our first meeting this week and just really focused on identifying what are some of the resources within the building, the district, the community that maybe teachers aren't familiar with. As well as looking at what kinds of things they would like professional development on and trying to plan for those things throughout the course of the year. And and also just really helping make sure that all the staff working with kids understand the important connection between students who have a positive emotional and social concept and academic success. They go hand in hand. And if kids are struggling in one area, they just can't turn it, turn it off and and come to school and be ready to learn. So our core team includes myself, our school counselor, our social worker, and also some teachers who participate, who participated in the Penn SEL training last year. So we've got a good group of people to start with and we're looking forward to the things that we're going to be able to do throughout the year. Our book fair is next week. It's Monday through Wednesday. And the PSA is, as Mr. Wetzel had shared, they've generously increased the amount of money available for students, which is, which is great to be able to cover the cost of books, which are rising and growing. And the kids are super excited to get out in the book fair. One student was asking me, is this the book swap? Can I bring in books from home? I said, I will do that a little bit later on. Also next week, KJ Reiman Snyder will be performing two shows in the afternoon on the twenty-seventh. So this is a concert that happens most years. And so she's going to come, come in and do that in the afternoon. Our open house is on Wednesday, the twenty-eighth, and the book fair will be open for that as well. And finally, we're really getting excited for a Van Gogh mobile art exhibit that will be coming in on October third and fourth. The students have the chance to go out and and see the nature in art exhibit that they have. And it features eight paintings and sculptures by from Victoria Fuller is her name. And the students get to interact with the various pieces of art and learn more about our ecosystem, but also how the artist uses her perspective on nature to express herself in the art. And I think that that's, that's really neat because we want our kids through their art projects to express themselves as well and what they have interest in. So it's going to be a really neat opportunity to work with Mr. Snyder and the Van Gogh exhibit. So.
The Dragon Scroll is a literary magazine that Mrs. Peck has produced in her class for the last several years. And it's the time of year where the requests are made for that work. It's all student generated work and we're looking at anything from visual art to poetry, one act plays, short stories, comics. And it's a neat way for the kids to express themselves in a variety of different formats. But it's fun also when they start coming in. It's a good time of year for that. We're just now are putting the requests out for students for their submissions. And the great part about it, they come from every corner of the building. Kids, you would never expect to want to contribute do. It's wonderful. I was in team meetings today and watched Mrs. Sample preparing for an upcoming STEM lesson. We're incorporating specific STEM activities in our math classes. She was working on an activity that involves solving puzzles using STEM concepts. The puzzles that are solved work toward creating the exposure of clues that will help solve a bigger problem, kind of like an escape room. And she's excited to show it to the kids, but it's really excited to show me. I can't wait to see it. Our fall fundraiser kicked off today. Some of you may have gotten an email request. The student council puts this on in the fall each year to generate money that goes toward student council activities and also directly to the student body. So some of the the money that they generate might go toward a donation to the school. They donated picnic tables and umbrellas, water fountain, water filling stations around the building. Or they will maybe take the kids that are involved in student council to a leadership summit. And, you know, they're able to pay a little bit more with the money that they have for that. So we're excited to to help the student council in their, in their efforts with that. I mentioned my team meetings, the team meetings this week and last week and probably next week all involve bringing the faculty along to a new observation framework. We're shifting from a Marzano model of education to Danielson. So the the good news for our teachers is that no matter whose framework we're using, good teaching is still good teaching. It's the language that we use to describe the good teaching that's shifting just a little bit. So the teachers are very eager to learn and understand what the differences are, but also to kind of give themselves more focus when they're looking at improving their practice, which is pretty good. The last thing I'll mention today is I had a student approach me and say, oh, yeah, how would you like to talk or have somebody involved in the Artemis Project talk to our student body? Charlotte Sherrell is a Bucknell grad, works in Texas for the space program. The Artemis Project is the one building a off-planet housing. That's the best I can do to describe it right now. But she has worked on the Artemis Project, but also worked in the Space Shuttle Program and is really looking forward to talking with our kids about these projects, about astronomy in general. She's used to talking in Texas to her own kids' schools in person, is going to step out of her comfort zone for us to and talk via Zoom with our kids and a date very soon in the, in the future.
Good evening. Today, Ms. Reber and I met with seven, eight students for planning tomorrow's pep rally. So the students took the lead role in developing and planning tomorrow's ideas, events, and then during the event tomorrow, they'll play a pretty significant role in leading the pep rally as well. So they'll be able to make different announcements and go through that event as school leaders. I listed a couple of things from the meeting that were just enjoyable overall. It was just exciting to see how excited our students were to have another pep rally. We shared a lot of laughs throughout the process of coming up with different like fun, engaging games that that would include all the grade levels and then also for like future pep rallies, we talked about some different ideas that would also include staff as well within that engagement. But overall, it was just an enjoyable process, kind of bringing that school spirit together and that like sense of community that our students, you know, did not have over the last couple of years because, you know, there was just the pandemic that was kind of impeding a lot of those things for gathering. So that was enjoyable. Yesterday, Ms. Checo and I had the opportunity to tour and visit Sun Tech. So we were invited there by the directors. So we were able to meet with the head director and the assistant director. They took us on a tour. They kind of talked about their programs. They talked about their facilities. We went through each of those programs and they were able to kind of show us firsthand the different components of kind of what that theory was that they're learning within the classroom. And then you know, students that weren't learning the theory at that piece, they were able to be interacting within the hands-on components of Sun Tech. The other parts that were really enjoyable for me was just seeing our students, seeing our students in a different setting. I would like to say, I think they also enjoyed seeing me. So there was a lot of smiles and a lot of conversations that happened of what they were learning. And then a few that I didn't see, I was able to kind of have conversations with out at dismissal time when they came back from the bus, just of what those experiences are like. So kind of moving forward, just trying to make more of an effort to get to Sun and see those students that are our students. And then Ms. Sands and Ms. Reber will also have an opportunity for the same tour in the beginning of October, I think Wednesday, October.
Um, I'm gonna start out with a couple of shout outs. So if, as you're leaving tonight, if they're still there, there is fall play practice going on, which is a wonderful sound to hear after not being able to have one for the the past couple of years. And just a shout out to Delbert and the custodial crew that worked with some volunteers. So if you have never seen the orchestra pit covered, it now is the flooring. So now we just never really had a need to do that. But so there's three levels to the orchestra's pit, the pit level. Then there's, you know, like kind of a halfway level. And then there's the complete cover, which it's amazing. Like if you walk out on it, you feel like almost like you're at a TED Talk or something. You know, just and with the play that they're doing, just a more, I think intimate audience performance that you'll be able to have from that. And again, that cannot have happened without people giving up time on a, on a Saturday to, you know, come in and and get that done and things. So it's just really great to see. I'd also like to extend that shout out, a shout out to Mr. Jones and Amanda Forrester, our head cafeteria manager here at the high school. Just they're doing a great job of trying to find new kid-approved, student-approved foods that we have. And I mean, we're very, very fortunate just with the different options and availability. And they've always done a great job of, you know, having things that our students like in a variety. But this year, they like today, they had wings. I mean, it felt like you were at the Super Bowl when you went in to the cafeteria. And it was three types of wings and you know, they, the kids at the pep rally, we had a whole conversation about wings for, you know, five, 10 minutes. So it's just those little things. I mean, I, I think Mr. Popovich said it best is like, you know, when they're like totally pumped about school lunch, you, you know, that's usually not the norm that you think of. And so I just want to, you know, express our thanks to Mr. Jones and Mrs. Forrester for doing that as well. Trying to think what else here. At our team meetings the past few weeks, we've worked in our academic intervention teams. So we've had whole group on meetings. We set up the DCI in different sections so that teachers can go from grade level to grade level around and talk about any students of concern or just, hey, I know you have this kid. Last year, can you give me some insight about, you know, what worked, what may not have worked? And then from that first initial conversation, then we'll start to have our individual student meetings. You know, where we brainstorm together as a team, we may call a parent in and and strategize together for that. So you know, that's great that that is up and running. Our staff meetings, the student assistance program, that's been up and running since the first week of school. Yesterday, we had our subject team meetings and it was just a great opportunity and a great I don't know how to describe the feel, like the rejuvenation of talking about teaching and learning and curriculum and where they want to go and, you know, instructional strategies to be able to have that be the forefront on what's everybody's mind instead of, okay, you know, what you know, we need more hand sanitizer, we need, you know, and certainly we still have those around the building, but just to see the focus predominantly on teaching and learning. And not that it wasn't there, but it is in a different presence this year. And even, you know, as teachers being able to reflect that their teaching style, they're able to do things differently. They're able to go back to some activities or they, they're wanting to have that engagement and being able to see like, oh, my gosh, what a difference it is to be able, you know, to interact and to be able to truly build that sense of community that, you know, besides your school community, there's also a class community. And even at the high school level where kids have multiple classes in a day, each class within that day, they're all communities too. And and just being able to feel that sense again is really remarkable.
Okay, talking about athletics first, fall sports are in full swing here. And as I've gotten around to practices and games and watched the coaches and the players participate, I'm really impressed in the coaches that we have here at Lewisburg. I really feel that they're doing the best job that they can to move the student athletes into to get the most out of them that they can, you know, and sometimes that is recognized on the field of play or on the, on the match or whatever it might be. Sometimes it's not, you know, sometimes it's smaller victories, but we do have several teams. They're well on their way to winning seasons, such as boys and girls cross country, field hockey's winning season right now. And so is boys soccer right now. All, all have winning records right now. As far as the athletic side of things go, I want to talk a little bit about e-school. This year, as far as full-time enrollment in e-school, there's one elementary student, four middle school students and twenty-one high school students full-time in the school. So as I understand, those numbers are down from before. We have more students in person. And as far as that goes, last week, I wanted to say I had the opportunity to attend the training session of the CSI U as part of, because remember the consortium that with the IU and along with Jen Sands and Kevin Mallory, the two counselors. And it was very, it was really a great day. You know, I learned some things that I didn't know before as far as producing reports or some things that we can do within the system. It was good to work with those two individuals and kind of get a, a better better structure and get to know each other with me being new here. So that was very helpful and I appreciate that we, the, the, being a part of that consortium with the E-tool, with the CSI U provides a great resource that we can just reach out to the people there at any point by email or phone and solve problems or try to get answers for students that are having issues possibly with their classes or logging in or different, different technical things that come up all the time. So but they're a great resource there and I really appreciate that we have that resource available to us.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. So we will be continuing our discussion this year in special education, specific with transition and the pathways and the career opportunities that are for students. We will be working with data later in the school year, specifically with those pathways. We're fortunate to partner with SUN ATI that gives our students the opportunity to earn those career certifications as well as work foundations that provide students those real-life career exploration opportunities, experiences and training. Last year at Lindtown CMSU awarded us a grant to develop a calming room. We are happy and grateful to them that they will be awarding a grant for us to also develop a calming room at Kelly Elementary. So those items have been ordered and hopefully we'll be ready to ship soon. And so we can get that room developed. And then finally, I just want to shine a light on our support teachers, our title teachers, school counselors and school social workers who really work hard in building relationships with our students and families. Those connections help us to understand the unique strengths and needs of our students. And without those relationships, it would be really hard for us to do our jobs. So I just want to say thank you and for to, to say how, what a roster there be.
Thank you. Thanks, everybody. Great to hear all that's happening in the buildings. That brings us back for the first time in a long time to Academic Spotlight, which is, was always my favorite part of board meetings. So we're very happy to welcome Mrs. Miller, who will tell us about STEM. Mrs. Moser, I didn't know if you wanted to offer any sort of introduction.
I could do so. Tara Miller's been a teacher with us here now a number of years as she'll identify here with her first slide that has her background. We're excited to bring STEM intentionally forward in a related arts rotation in grades two, three at Kelly and four, five here than in the Lindtown building. And I take nothing away from Tara. Tell us everything that's going on, please.
How much time do you have? Thank you. We can move on to the next one already. We'll keep them moving. Um, for those of you who don't know, I'm Tara Miller. I've been with the district for six years now. I know some of your children very well. I taught second grade for the first three years and then when lovely COVID hit, I had second grade online. And then I had honestly the good idea to do kindergarten through fifth grade online. And now I'm the STEM teacher as well as gifted at Kelly. I'm a professional. I know sometimes you hear STEM and you're like, well, why is she? I do have a STEM endorsement from PDE as well as online teaching. My master's in curriculum assessment and teaching, and I'm currently also a doctorate student at Wilkes University in education leadership with a curriculum and instruction tract. I was asked to share my own personal interest in STEM, really put myself out there. I was not traditionally good in what would be considered STEM subjects. I had a very defining moment in third grade where I knew I was no longer good at math and struggled a little bit there. And then when I took my masters, I started to see STEM was a pathway for me to work in those subjects and to develop my own abilities. And I wanted to share that with students because that was powerful for me. And I can identify with kiddos who don't always feel strongest in all the areas. And I feel like STEM is a way that taps into what kids are naturally good at, asking questions, solving problems, ripping things apart. I'm sorry if your children come home and tear everything apart, but it seemed like a great fit personally. Um, so just a very quick overview. I know STEM has been a buzzword in education now for several years. So just to clarify, the way I look at it is that STEM isn't going anywhere and I truly feel that students won't without it. And I spoke with students very candidly the first day. And I said, part of my role is to get you ready for jobs that haven't even been invented yet. And they were kind of like, what? I'm like, don't worry about it. It's my problem, not yours. But essentially, yes, we are, we as a district are constantly wanting to do everything we possibly can to empower students, particularly post-secondary. And STEM just provides them a wider range of skills in that area that they can do. So also US is not unfortunately very well known for our scores in that area. So all we can do to help is beneficial in my mind. That's also part of our own excellence and equity two thousand twenty-five strategic plan. um is beneficial in my mind. That's also part of our own Excellence and Equity 2025 strategic plan. Um I won't read down, I promise. But just so you kind of have an idea of what goes into the lesson elements, um when we plan, you can see some examples up there. What I'd rather focus on is what the students are essentially learning. And the way I presented it and explained it to that age range of second through fifth graders is that have you ever seen the movie The Sandlot? And the scene where the ball goes over the fence and they try and they try, you know, and they try and try again to get it back. And they think about what didn't work, what needs to be changed, how they can improve. That's STEM. And then the light bulb went off. And I'm like, oh, yeah, I get this class now. Um so I said, great. So we'll focus on problem solving, critical thinking, teamwork in a less traditional sense where not everybody's good at everything. And not everybody's good at the same thing, but everybody's good at something. So how do we pull those together? Highlight different students' abilities and kind of work together um to solve some problems and reach some goals. Creativity, communication, perseverance, career exploration, we hit on quite a bit. And then, of course, your digital literacy. So if I had to narrow down out of all of the things we do, those would be the big eight that we're trying to accomplish with STEM. And then just to clarify what it's not, because there are some misconceptions. Even though I am the gifted teacher at Kelly, STEM is not a gifted course. It's not for advanced students. It's for everyone. Um any student. And they do come to STEM and those opportunities are available for them. It's not just playing with popsicle sticks and pipe cleaners. Um a student had come up to me and said, you know, Mrs. Miller, people come and just see us and they think we're just having fun, but we're learning. I was like, yes, that's exactly right. Um it's not a waste of time. I really want to thank you sincerely for allowing this position to come to fruition. And I hope you'll start to immediately and continue to see results from students being enrolled in this type of program. Um and it's not a rogue course. I promise we're aligned to the alphabet soup up there with different standards, resources and guidelines. So now the good stuff, the kids. Um so in second grade, these are some of my second graders on the first day of STEM. Um all of the grade levels are focusing on coding at their different ability levels. And then we focus on specific engineering units that differ between the grade levels that also align incredibly nicely to the science content within that grade level. So when second graders aren't learning coding, they're focusing on animals and adaptations. And all of our STEM and engineering, we follow the engineering design process. And it's again, not just putting together popsicle sticks and pipe cleaners. It's, this is a real problem, guys. Um real scientists try to figure out for second grade the features of animals so that how can we use biomimicry to solve some problems? So it's things that students can relate to, it's real-world problems, and then providing them opportunities to kind of brainstorm and think how to solve that and then going through that iterative design process. Um more second graders on the first day of school. They were all successful, by the way, with their first STEM challenge. And we did talk about the process over product. So third graders you see here this week, um they were doing relay programming. So we had the the program, they had to code, and then the puzzle was up on the board. So they were coming up and back and forth with teams trying to write the correct code. Um and I told them, I said, we have fire drills for a reason, so we know how to be safe for a fire drill. I said, today we'll do something. We're gonna have a frustration drill. I'm going to purposely frustrate you so you know how to handle that when it comes up. So we talked a lot in the buildings about social emotional learning. That's a piece of STEM as well, how to properly handle the frustration and challenge we feel when we try to solve problems. So third graders will also focus their engineering efforts on natural disasters. So they have some really cool um projects coming up where they build model homes to withstand like earthquake tables, hurricanes, very much a current event around the world, unfortunately. So getting students to think outside their own pocket and then how to help people. Um here is photo credit to uh Mr. Roll and thanks to Mr. West for the third grade pictures and second grade. Um these are fourth graders. Fourth grade is focusing on solar energy. We talked about the National Academy of Engineering and their 14 grand challenges. And how solar energy is one of the biggest problems because right now it's not economical. So students were using LED bulbs, copper conductive tape, solar cells, and they were asked to create a design model home, which two groups successfully did. And then we spent time talking about, again, it's great and exciting when it happens, but why didn't it happen? And then we focus on that. And they were okay with that part of it as well. And then finally, fifth graders, fifth graders have really, really cool opportunities this year. Um I was selected to be part of a research slash curriculum grant. So it's funded by the National Science Foundation. And students participate in learning about local watersheds and conservation and testing water health. So what you see here is from um this afternoon. Um I was waiting in the Limestone Run Creek this morning and bringing out creek water for students to do different tests like dissolved oxygen, nitrate, um air temperature, water temperature, things of that nature. And then we discussed the levels and if that was healthy, being part of our own watershed. So then fifth graders will finish the water's curriculum um probably around the second semester. And then the rest of their engineering also follows water, which is one of the 14 grand challenges. And again, students will be coding throughout the semesters as well. So just some really good shots of kids getting into what they were doing today to go ahead and wrap it up. This is my favorite. Um I hope this is what you understand STEM is. Like I've received really good feedback so far. I appreciate the feedback. I welcome the feedback. Please keep it coming. Um but students seem to be really excited about these opportunities. Families have been supportive. I've had some people reach out and offer partnerships from um Penn College, for example. So we have some really interesting opportunities coming up to extend beyond the classroom with our students. So I'll light it or excuse me, I'll end it here with the quote that education is not the filling of a pail, but the lighting of a fire. And I'm incredibly excited and pleased to have this opportunity to light that fire with students. They come excited. Um they're ready and ready to go. And it's just really cool to see that in the two buildings, to have students excited to be there, excited about what they're doing and then taking it other places as well. So thank you for your time. It was a pleasure to be here.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
I I just want to say I especially appreciate hearing about how you're helping them manage when it doesn't work and that the frustration drill, I think we all would benefit from that. So I'm I'm grateful to hear that's part of the process too.
Thank you.
Yeah. Alright, well, thank you so much. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Um and in this uh meeting with no action, um that brings us to the board president's report. Um and I will skip my report and just make comments during director's comments. Um and turn it to you, Mrs. Moses, for the interim superintendent's report.
And I too tonight thought we were hearing enough good, wonderful things. Uh I would only echo the sentiment. We're well into the first marking period with content areas uh being spoken about tonight and Tara's examples shared with us. We're doing school.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um any board liaison or committee reports? Okay, um then that brings us to the consent agenda um with an unrevised personnel report. Congratulations. Um is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? So moved by Mrs. Hanos. Is there a second?
Definitely.
Seconded by Mrs. Lyons. Any discussion? Alright, uh we'll call vote, please, Paula.
Mm-hmm.
Dr. Zimmerman, yes. Mr. Fatsor?
Yes.
Ms. Hanos?
Yeah.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Ms. Lyons?
Yes.
Ms. Stan?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. And that brings us to director's comments. Um and I will start with you, too.
Um I just want to give another shout out to Mrs. Jarrett with Dot Day. First, I'm not a fan of themes. He's the theme ever. Loved it. Markers. It's amazing. Um but also the kids are definitely very into it, seeing the pictures. I know I didn't know anything about Dot Day and both my girls were like watching the story again on YouTube where they were, where they could like find it. So I just think that was really good. And it's such a great message with it. So that just seemed like a really great um thing that happened. Um the Sun Tech tours, I love Sun Tech. Sun Tech like the most fun place to be. So that's exciting that more people are going over and having tours over there. And I also just wanted to say, I know I said in a previous board meeting, but Sun Tech has a really great social media presence. So like if anybody's not following Sun Tech on Facebook, like they really are doing a great job with keeping people informed of what's going on. There's things coming up that people can go over for. There's evening nights at the bistro coming up. I don't know all the dates, but I know they're coming up like the beginning of October. So I really suggest for people to follow them because they just are doing a lot of really cool things. And they're, I'm really impressed with their presence on social media. It's just really, really good. Um and then just about this STEM presentation we got, I think that's great. And I think for anybody that is watching the meeting or may watch later, I think to remember that sometimes when we are going through the budgeting parts of the year, it can be very frustrating. But this is some of the stuff that comes out of what we're able to give the district is some of these new um programs that we're doing. And we have the new programs at the middle school with BCIT and just how exciting they can be. And of course, we're always going to have science and math and English, and those can also be very, very exciting. Um but for these to be something different and to see how exciting the kids I've had with it and just kind of the lessons we can have. So just for people to remember that when it gets to the not fun budget parts, that this is some of the stuff that we've been able to do because of that, just kind of my little throw in there for when everybody gets mad next year. And then that's all I have.
Thank you, Jordan.
Uh just a note, uh thank you to the Green Dragon Foundation for the uh gifts under the consent agenda that we just accepted. So just putting a little plug in there.
Thank you.
I'd like to thank the PSA for their support of the book fairs. I think that's really meaningful to take out the stressful elements and make the book fair a rewarding experience for the kids. Um echo a little bit about uh Sun Tech. I think it's fantastic that you're able to visit with as many seniors as we have over there this year. I think that to establish that connection and show that you all know what they're doing over there is special. So thanks for making that effort.
Thanks, uh Mary Ann.
Sorry, I was getting to my unmute button. Um you know, we still talking about the book fair and I can smell the books and I can remember how excited I was when my package would come because we would order them. And then one time a year, we would have the book fair. And so it was literally one of my favorite times of the year. So I love that it still happens. And I love that we've made it, um that the PSA has made it, sorry. That so that everyone gets a book regardless. Um and I just, I really appreciate that. And the STEM program, if we'd had something like that when I was young, I might really like math. So uh that was really fun to listen to. Um I'm appreciate what everybody's done. I appreciate um Delbert and folks who uh got the orchestra pit covered up so people can see what it looks like when it is uh fully covered. It stages can completely change the atmosphere for a play. And uh I'm excited to see what that turns out to be and uh excited for all the athletes that are doing so well, all the teams. Go Dragons.
Thanks. And Cory?
I don't have anything to say.
Um I will just add, um I don't want to echo what people have already said, that the whole, the dot day presentation was fantastic. Um it Peter Reynolds has a different book, which I think came first called Ish, which is sort of a similar theme. It's like you can't really draw the thing, but you kind of draw it ish. Um which was sort of an anthem in my household. And I he kind of went all in on that with the dot. So I'm just excited that that's a message that kids are getting, right, that you it's really consistent with the learning how to be frustrated and learning how to be wrong. So that it's, you know, you should just try, do the thing and see what happens. Um so I'm pleased about that. And I was really excited to hear about the literary magazine at the at the middle school. So the kids aren't just reading good stuff, but also creating um their own literature and art. And I'm happy that there's a venue for that. Um and I say this every time, but I'm always really happy to hear about the the very explicit social emotional learning opportunities for for um faculty and staff and for the kids, but also just the general sense of wellness and well-being that you were talking about in the high school. Whether it's wings or um just a sense of getting back to normal, it's nice to know that wellness is front and center. Um and just to say again, um gratitude to Mrs. Miller for taking the time to come in and to put together the presentation. Um and I I would also just love to hear more informally about, I'm sure there are just really wonderful synergies for the kids between the lessons that they're learning and those and that STEM rotation and that their other courses, right? They're gonna be so readily taking those skills back into their other classes. Um and that's that's gonna be really exciting um too. Um and then the last thing I wanted to say is I got to attend the Green Dragon Foundation um volunteer recognition event on Sunday. Was it Sunday? Yes. Um so it was, it's always um important and and uh wonderful to be able to um celebrate all the good work that the Green Dragon Foundation does. And the focus of that event um is recognizing their their volunteers and the many individuals who put so much um into this community and the school district in particular. So I was privileged to be part of that. Um and it was just great to spend a lovely afternoon with people who care a lot about our kids. Uh and that's all I have. So that brings us to citizens' comments to the board on non-agenda items.
Nothing.
And anybody in the room? Alright, uh then I will take a motion to adjourn. Moved by Mrs. Lyons. There's a second, second, seconded by Mrs. Hanos. All in favor, please say hi.
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 Motion adjourn, meeting adjourn.